Well, it's at nine, six thirty in public meeting.
Stand and pledge.
My allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have trustee Gasser and trustee Black are excused tonight. Where else president? So we'll move on to public comments and inputs. We have Norris Johnson.
Father, maybe, Norris Johnson, I have a concern. I stated thirty eighteen, settled over court. I've been there since August of nineteen ninety-nine. Have three children, and I moved, they only had two. As they grew up, they ended up going to college, getting jobs, graduate from college, moving out of the home, they moved back home. Since then, they all have vehicles. There's an ordinance, there's states that there is no parking from hours of two AM to six AM. I won't go into details about the issues prior to, from my understanding, early today, that whatever was set up beforehand has changed with whatever the board changed. Prior to this conversation I'm having now, there were permits that were available. I have two cars in my garage. I have four cars that are in my parking, are in my driveway. They're not like I'm collecting cars, the cars that I pay on. Can't get rid of them if I turn them against my credit. So as my kids come, they all work in school system, they have different jobs, maybe now and then, I don't remember now, I'm getting tickets back and forth. Just recently got one that was in May. As I came here, my son gave me one he had on the car. Because at this point, I don't know what to do. So can't park in front of my house. My quarter's saying, nobody is there, there's five houses, it's big. It's not like the other two quarter sections off of Maryland. Nobody, there's no problem there, I did not cause any problems. So it's not like something that we're trying to do. So couldn't park there. Prior to you guys deciding to have a meeting number ten, I was in North Carolina in front of, I have no living relatives in the state of Wisconsin or Illinois. I went home. I made a decision without even seeing, even I didn't communicate or try to figure out exactly what was going on. So I parked the car on my grass. I get a ticket two days ago, but not parked on my grass. I had no, no explanations, no, okay, this is what you need to do. Then I am told that the sign that I see on Lathrum Avenue as well as on Taylor Avenue, and I took a picture of it today, Village of Elmwood Park parking regulation, no parking on any street from two AM to six AM, that's not a question, except by permit. I was told today that there's no such thing as permit, had not been. Now, I'm not the smartest person in the world. I'm sitting here with a degree in accounting, so I'm very detailed about everything. There were permits, treasurer that was here prior to that, then that thirty-three or thirty, yeah, thirty-three oh two off of Lathrum, told me about the permission. The lieutenant that I talked to at seven o'clock yesterday morning communicated to me that someone on Maryland had a permit. I'm trying to figure out what permit they had. So I was told I need to get a pay for paper driveway, let's get a driveway. Now I gotta go through a building thing with that, try to figure out how to pay for that, because at this point, I'm getting told, I'm getting tickets every day, fifty dollars ticket. That's a total of fourteen hundred dollars a month, total of eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars a year, three hundred fifty dollars a week. All I asked for was a basic permit to me figure out and try to work on this, or find out where I can just get my cars, walk down the street or whatever. I've been trying, for the life of me, none of this is making sense to me. I, I, I just don't understand a lot. And I don't need nobody to give me this blank standard, because in my opinion, when I moved there, everybody that was a part of that codicil was in their eighties and nineties and only had two kids, and at noon, they would talk to each other and say, well, we got doctors for this. So I kind of like, I ain't got no kids, I don't have no one to play with, but right across the street from my house was a guy that was the village president at the time, before it became Elmwood, it was Elmwood Village before it came to Elmwood Park. It was never an issue. Now at this point, you can't have nobody to come visit, not that I want folks to come visit me anyway, I don't, I refuse to let them come. But it's frustrating, it's miserable, it has put a bad taste in my mouth, it has put a bad taste in my mouth. And for the life of me, as soon as I can find somebody to buy my house, I'm gone. I, I, I don't know what has happened, I don't know, I, I have a lot of expect, I have a lot of reasons. And I am, I am a person that think, do things by the book. So you talk to me long enough, I'm gonna tell you what you did, when you did it, how you did it, and how long you've been doing it, trust me. I'm one, I'm, I'm just that good, because I can figure out what happened, I saw the dynamics of my neighborhood change, and all of a sudden, I'm hearing, there's no permit. But you got a big sign out there, except by permit. So if that's not the case, you guys need to remove the sign, you need to change it, because that's on Taylor and Lathrum. I, I just don't know at this point. But this is not making sense to me, I'm not asking a lot, I'm not asking for nobody's baby, I'm not asking for nobody's life, I'm just asking for some consideration, so we can figure out what needs to be done. I've got to figure out how they get the money. Most of you guys are sitting on this board, are retired, you got your money, I saw you standing just like a military person, so I'm quite sure you loaded with stuff. So I, I, I see that, I don't have that type of money. I get four hundred and fifty dollars, I have kids that will take care of them, I have to pay, pay for their college out of my pockets. So I don't have that type of money to go and just build a park, or build a, a, a thing, it's like, you know, a driveway. From my understanding, closer for the figures that I've gotten to date, they're about two or three thousand dollars. I don't have that. So trying to figure out how to get to a two thousand, I'm, I'll talk to you guys about a fifty dollar ticket, so they should tell you where I'm at. That's my spiel, so I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. Is, and just, the board will consider the comments under different items, so again, thank you. Last chance, any other public comment? All right, moving on. Consent the agenda, so we'll be, assuming everyone now has read the agenda and minutes, I will be looking for a motion to approve the minutes and consent the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August twelfth and consent the agenda for tonight's meeting.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
First by trustee Root, and second by trustee Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You guys have it, so passed. Reports, let's start with the sheriff's report.
So I apologize, I didn't get a chance to print off copies for everybody, so I'm just gonna read this off my phone quick. All right, village board members, in the month of August twenty twenty-one, deputies spent more than three hours in the village. Throughout the months, throughout the month, deputies conducted thirty-two crime preventions in the Village of Elmwood Park, they also addressed one tree down, three rescue runs, one wild per check, one on unwanted party complaint. Deputies conducted several traffic stops, issuing three speeding citations, one passing and no passing zone violation. Deputies continue to maintain an active presence in the Village of Elmwood Park. Assigned deputies as well as cars will continue to safeguard residential areas, ensure business security after hours, and conduct traffic prevention and enforcement in the spirit of community policing. In August, deputies did spend three hours of available time in the village for an invoice total of one seventy-eight sixty-eight.
Questions?
Thanks for being on Lathrum yesterday and handling people, that was cool.
It wasn't me, but it was you guys, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Good to hear, I'll pass that on to Tynick.
Cause the one lady in the Mercedes Benz that had her head buried, there you go, she gone. Yep, so cool.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You say.
Thank you. President's report, so we'll run to some items about the road project and the landscaping restoration. So we had previously announced that landscaping restoration was gonna proceed maybe two or three weeks ago. There's been an issue with some corrective work that has to be done, so additional work from what was actually designed. There are some structures that had to be ordered, and we're waiting on these structures to come in before DK can complete their work. So that's one reason why landscaping restoration hasn't proceeded. The second item is that we have become aware in the last about three weeks now of electrical issues with lighting system, which RIC, Electric, myself, Chris, and Lou have been involved with investigating what the issue is exactly, and then trying to assign responsibility to who we believe the asphalt party is. So that, the area that we believe the break is at is one that was part of the excavation on North Elmwood, west of Standish Lane, on the south side of the road. So we're waiting for the official letter from RIC on what the repair should be with the negotiations with the contractor, who we believe to be at fault. It gets a little sticky, so we need to be very clear, and we need to be economical in our approach. Because when we assign blame to someone else, and we've already made decisions on how to go about the repair, we need to make sure that we did things the right way. So right now, I, we just got an email from DK saying that they're having an issue with a shortage of these structures, and they're looking at alternate suppliers. If they're gonna come back to us and say that this is gonna be another three weeks until we get structures, or excuse me, castings, then we're probably just gonna close it up as it is right now. And then we'll do repairs on those areas as we open it back up to replace the endlets. So it depends on what they say tomorrow, if they say it's gonna be another week, we'll probably wait, if not, we're gonna get the thing closed up, so.
Wait until when?
And to...
So you said it...
Tomorrow. If, if, so if they say tomorrow it's gonna be another week until we actually get the castings in...
Right.
And then they do the work in a week, then we'll wait to landscape restoration until they've got their work done.
Oh, okay, okay.
The electrical item, we were excavating areas, so that was another reason, hold out, we're past that, so we won't be excavating anymore. So the, the repair, it looks like it's gonna be something that revolves boring, so we're gonna try not to trench anymore, especially this late in the year.
Okay.
So... That's really about it on the road project. Can I ask that we speak answer? We're trying not to do a back, but I'd be happy to answer your questions on this, but otherwise it turns into a discussion on the road project. Thank you.
Could we address the seating and the landscaping on the side of the road? For many...
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's what we talked about, the landscaping restoration is the seating. So once we get the rest of the work done, if they're gonna say they'll be there a week to do it, that's when we'll do all the seating for the landscape restoration. So the contract reads that any of the areas that were disturbed are replaced or are repaired by the contractor. So even the areas that were stockpiled on South Elmwood and Standish, I think that was, where they went to turn the lawn, everything gets repaired. It's just on site in the short term. Any questions about road? Okay. I'd like to talk real quickly about the progress for renting out the Taylor complex. We, we have now another prospective tenant for building five, which is looking to occupy the building at the end of the month. So we are really getting close to having the entire campus leased out, which I don't remember the last time we've had that. So Chris will probably expand on that a little bit more, as to what that does financially. And that's about it for me. Trustee Barrios.
I'll interview you for about the lights, I have nothing else.
Trustee Wax, excused, trustee Gasser, excused, trustee Hinkle.
Nothing really new, other than just working on a couple issues with trees and weeds. Nothing weird, you know what?
Trustee Johnson.
Yeah, someone asked about the bike path, about putting benches, but I mean, that's really the energy scrap that owns...
That's a county discussion?
Yeah.
Which they could, I think.
Right.
We have representations.
That's it.
Trustee Root.
I'm gonna start with a request from Ally, she's not here tonight, Ally Gasser. She has the preservation receipt and car show coming up at the end of September, and she is looking for volunteers to help out for that day. It is the twenty-fifth of September. So if you are interested, please call her, call Chris, call Ernie, and then you can help out with that. That would be great, she'd appreciate it. And then rentals for this past month for the fall, rental fees came in fifteen hundred dollars, which is a very good amount. And I've been working with Chris on some of the pre-budget meetings and trying to figure things out till that come November, we'll have a pretty good handle on the budget.
Can I add something? Anybody's interested in helping me cook?
Yes, yes.
I would happily take the help.
Yes, Ken has volunteered to cook for the car show, so that is very much appreciated.
Simple, it's gonna be hot dogs, bread, stuff like that, but if anyone's interested, email.
All right, thank you, trustee Root. Administrator Jenkins.
All right. Like I shared, my typed update wasn't too much to report on, this was a meeting not too long ago. I've been continuing to investigate the marlin for the window complex, which we'll talk more about later today, so I won't bore you guys too much on that. Things that we've already mentioned, lamp outage, spent a lot of time with that, CBS trash issue that was taken care of, permits continuing to be issued, hall rentals continuing to come in, everything is great. And then the little tip advice over here that I'm excited about, maybe nobody else is, is I reformatting everything in our QuickBooks accounting software to line up with our lineups and our budget. So I've been working under the system that your previous clerk treasurer had done how many years ago, and kind of been jumping along. So I thought it was fine the time, then I took a little more ownership over it, repack format these things. It makes reading and reporting so much easier now, so I'm super thrilled about it, and it will help us when we budget forward to twenty twenty-two. And speaking of which, preliminary estimates, as President Rossi had touched on, with the rentals of the complex, so far, and again, this is very early estimates, I'll give you more details next month, but we're looking at a surplus of revenues of about sixty thousand dollars. And so if you remember, two years ago and last year, when the middle of the pandemic, and our revenues were short, we could feel confident they were definitely on the other end of that. And so now those muddies could be used towards more contract thinking stuff, and other agents would check off our place, so it's good and exciting.
Questions? All that and nobody, all right. Moving on, an old business discussion and possible approval of the twenty twenty-one municipal bonding for Taylor Complex capital projects, just please.
Yeah, so I'll start with the money piece, and then I'll let President Rossi share about the exciting meeting we had today. So if you guys want, I'll pull out this document I sent to you guys, shows the report for Ellers, giving the overview. So what this reflects, is an updated breakdown, again, the borrowing for three hundred thousand through Tri-City Bank in order to execute maintenance projects for the complex, mainly the window replacements that we had talked about. The only change since the last meeting that you've seen is that we went back and forth with our bonding attorney in regards to whether these projects were tax exempted or not. So important thing to remember is that while we are tax exempt, the difference is the use of the buildings and what we use them for is not necessarily tax exempt. So we act more with commercial business, like that leases property to other people. So we didn't quite get the full tax exemption, and so this reflects rate change, what that would be. The long story short is it didn't change that much. The last meeting, when I talked about the rate being at six point five, that is still what is reflected here. I mean, we can go through this whole chain if you want, it's up to you guys, otherwise it's the same breakdown I gave you at the last meeting. So really, all we're waiting on is the official resolution documents. They tried to prepare it in time for types meeting, didn't quite get it done. So now, between now and October's meeting, they have our attorney review it, have our financial advisor review it, picture of the language, all kosher. And then in October, I'll be asking for approval, and I'll implement it, by the way, on the tax roll for twenty twenty-two. That's the financial piece, so I'll let President Rossi share about it.
And just one more comment on this, this is amazing, maybe getting three hundred thousand and paying only fifty-eight thousand in principal, I mean, these rates are just amazing. Excuse me, adventurous guess, thank you. So that, and if you could see, two thousand twenty-six and then two thousand thirty-two, those are the fall offs that we're looking at. So in twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-six, the Taylor Complex, that falls off, so we're no longer paying that note, and then we also have the two thousand thirty-two, that's the tenure on the new that we're looking at taking on. So in two thousand thirty-two, we're back at square one, and we would have the lowest no rate in Wisconsin at least. So that's when we look at doing more projects at the roads, again, and major items. So the meeting that we had today, we met with John Schmidtbar of Cuny Architects. I've mentioned their architectural firm last meeting, and they have a lot of experience in municipal projects, familiar with the bid process, bid opening, award, things like that, specifications that are really geared towards our type of project. So we looked at building envelope systems, specifically the windows and doors, and then pricing those, or how to put together something that would be per building. So right now, this is just getting his pricing, so it was just a higher level discussion. If it's something that after we see the pricing, and it seems reasonable, we can move forward with them, we'll probably end up getting one more check price from another architect. My experience with Cuny on a non-municipal side is they, they really have a good process for going through municipal work. It's not something that I feel a lot of firms their size are good at, so we're gonna have a discussion on how, you know, we're gonna actually bid this out, and then trying to keep it apples to apples is something that's very difficult. So based on what their number comes back, or what their number is, then we'll have another discussion, see how to move forward, if we do move forward with Cuny. Another part of that discussion was, we looked at the mechanical system, so we've been slowly replacing furnaces, I think for four now. We talked about, because there was some confusion in the bids that we received, on maybe putting together a specification, more of a generic specification that can be used each time we replace a unit, so when we go for bids, aside from this project, we, on this one, we'll tie it into it, so we'll throw a portion at the furnace replacement. But then we have something that every time, we can say, this is what we want, get three bids on it very easily, and then move forward, not leaving it to the contractor's interpretation of what we need. So John said that he would most likely get something together early next week, so then we'll have that information, have discussion internally here, and then figure out what the next step will be. I'm still gonna get just a check on it, no matter what, just to see where we're at, and if everything seems reasonable, then we'll look at moving forward. That would be what we do before we go out to bid, it's somewhat of a separate discussion from Ellers, because once we, securing the money doesn't have anything to do with the bid process right now. So we can secure the money, and then look at a bid process that's gonna happen over the winter months. So that usually is how you get the best pricing. Sorry, there was a long rant, but does anyone have any questions on the process? And, and we, excuse me, we don't think we'll get all the buildings with this, so we're not gonna replace all the windows, we're gonna make it so that it's per building, we're thinking somewhere around seventy, eighty thousand, maybe a little bit more to do all the windows in one building, so maybe we get two buildings, and then we maybe look at some furnaces. We don't necessarily have to spend up to three, you know, the exact three hundred thousand, so whatever we feel comfortable with once we get the bids in. And we're gonna look at options too for the windows, so using more of like a storefront system, which is, anytime you go to a store and you see those aluminum doors and all glass, that versus something that's not so much commercial, a little bit more residential just to compare, but cost is really gonna be something in maintenance systems, or maintenance on these systems, so.
I actually followed you.
I don't even remember what I said. Any questions? Okay. So at this point, without Ellers, it's just a discussion. We'll be on the agenda next month, and we'll have more information on the architectural costs. New business discussion, a discussion and possible approval of municipal building lease policy updates.
Sure, we got a meeting with our Realtor, our written spot real, went through the buildings, and he made some recommendations to the amount that we lease out the buildings. I would say it's less of, well, your buildings are really bad condition, and they need to get, you need to have a lower value, it's more so because of the division of space, they're not equal on each side, so it doesn't make sense to charge people equal amount on each side. So this reflects that change, so you see two A, you recommended a range of eight hundred to one thousand two hundred per month, and four A, you recommended between a thousand to one thousand two hundred. So you just feel that those are more marketable rates that we could get for this property, so you guys approving this, then you're allowing President Rossi and I to execute leases under those conditions.
Again, we start at the high end, we don't go right to the bottom. This just gives Randy the flexibility to have a discussion and say, well, there's some leeway here. And Randy has been doing one heck of a job getting these buildings leased, and he, I mean, he's bringing people through quite often. Not everything turns into a potential lease agreement, but he's putting a lot of work in, so I, for what he's doing, I, I take these recommendations to be good and accurate. And any discussion? Okay, if that is the case, then we'll be looking for a motion to approve the changes to the municipal lease policy.
I make a motion to approve the municipal building leasing policy, as outlined in the document dated August, the thirteenth, no.
Next one.
Sorry, updated and approved nine, nine of two thousand twenty-one.
We'll take it, we have a motion, is there a second?
On second?
First by trustee Johnson, or trustee Hinkle, second by trustee Root, all in favor? All right, aye, opposed? You guys have it, so passed. Next item, discussion and possible approval of Taylor Complex sign policy. What, what has bothered me is that everyone kind of makes their own signs around the complex, and we just spent a decent amount of money to put the building signage up for this building, and then the, well, what is our municipal building, right now, building one. So I wanted to see a formal signage policy that we will then incorporate into the lease agreement throughout the leases. So that's really, it's a separate document, so it can be modified independently of the lease. Long story short, I made some last minute changes on this as well, but we're looking at now four foot wide by two and a half foot wide, five foot wide by two and a half foot tall, but no smaller than two foot wide by one foot tall sign. So a rectangular sign, scale has to be preserved in that ratio essentially. So twice as wide as it is tall, six inch tall lettering, we have four, four inch tall here, but it should be six inch tall not to exceed. The sign should be within five feet at the entrance of the building, or no, closer than five feet from the entrance of the, to the, or to the building, and then no further than fifteen feet from the building, adjacent to the entrance. White background, green border, you can see where we're going with this one, we want to start making everything look like what our new signage is for everything else that is the village. And then the logo cannot be more than twenty-five percent of the surface area of the sign. These, there's other details on it, you know, painted on lettering, if they're gonna do applied lettering, it can't be more than a quarter inch off the face. Signs have to be made of weatherproof or weather rated, these high quality materials, five foot off the ground to center a sign. This just gives a tenant, when they sign onto this policy, an understanding of what is expected of them, or what they are allowed to do for signage. So we have something that's uniform, that they can just go take to a signage contractor and get made, installed, done.
Here's a thought, we provide the signage as a village, that way it's dictated what it looks like, and then charge an additional lease price for that, or is that not?
We could, I, I take it the other, the problem is, is then we become, how are you gonna, you know, attribute the cost? We can police it, and that's written in here, but it's so much easier to do it this way, and this is what we do at other properties, is that you give them a specification, put it on them, if they, they can get a deal on it, they can't, that's totally what their negotiation ability is.
I'm only thinking like certain strip malls, they've got the sign, you know, so...
They've got the sign, you know, so-and-so accounting, such and such a law firm.
Yes. We, we talked about that, further down the road, we might do something like that upfront.
Okay.
Um, just for now, because people are putting up signs. You know, they need to put up signs to identify their business.
Of course.
So this at least, in the short term, gives us something.
Self-control over there.
Exactly. In the future, if, the problem is, is those signs are huge. So putting one up against, up, up on Taylor right now, I don't know how well received that would be. And plus, then we have to go to Racine...
Correct.
To get that approval.
To get permanent, so, okay, okay.
And then also something we need to add to this, as I was saying this, is that all signs have to adhere to the Racine, the city of Racine signage policies. Um, and then one more item I added for enforcement on this at the end here is that, um, obviously the sign should be kept up by tenants. Upon notice by the village, repair or replace to conform with this policy. What I've added is repair or replacement must be completed within 14 days, or the village has the right to remove the signage or repair and add cost of tenants' rents over six months or a shorter duration if remaining lease is less than six months. We're gonna take the sign down. The second part of that is so that we can do it, but that's if, like, it needs a little touch up. You know, we can go out and just dress it up. It's not so that we can replace the sign, we're gonna take the sign down before we go there, though. But this just gives us more leeway. I said that to their attorney's present, I wanted him to know we're not gonna start destroying signs.
All right, I trust you.
Any questions?
When this is adopted, what will we do with the signs that are already there, if we're looking at the lease?
They're grandfathered, the way I see it. So when we have them signed in new lease agreement, then we'll say, you know, you have to adhere to the, the signage policy dated 9/9/21. So we roll it into the lease that way.
Talking about the recording?
Yeah.
But beyond that, I mean, the incoming tenant for building five asked about signage. You have two tenants in building one who's asking about signage. You have a tenant in building two that's asking about signage. So once we adopt this, I'm probably just gonna send it up to everybody, because everybody's been asking about it. Um, so, and they'll probably...
And so then we have the discretion, let's say two tenants in building one, and that's really where you're gonna see this. We'll do multiple tenants, and they say, well, you know, we don't want four signage at the entrance, we want one sign, we don't wanna be on it. That's where we'll make the exception here. This allows, there's a little bit of discretion given to myself and Chris then, to negotiate with people and say, okay, well, here, we're gonna do something a little bit different, because we got four people on the same buildings, at the same building, so it just makes sense.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll be looking for a motion. People other than Laura can make motions.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the signing policy as outlined in the documents dated... When?
9/9/21? And with, with notes by?
As amended.
Yeah, as amended.
As amended, correct.
Yep.
Uh, dated 9/9/20.
We'll take it, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by trustee Barrios, oh, excuse me, first by trustee Hinkle, second by trustee Barrios, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so passed. Item seen on approval of accounts payable, everyone had a chance to take a look, or at least put a pen to it. All right, then we'll look for a motion on accounts payable approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Aye.
First by trustee Ruth, second by trustee Johnson, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so passed. Next item, D, a motion for, a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute 1985G, spurring with legal counsel, a governmental body who is running oral or written device concerning strategy to be adopted by the body who expects litigation in which it is or likely to involve a rent parking policy, so litigation. Do you?
Nia Roro.
Do we have a motion?
Motion, I, I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by, we'll get on to Ruth. First by Hinkle, second by Ruth. Uh, Roro?
Who's this? Who's this?
Is that I or?
Ah.
Rossi, aye?
Johnson, aye.
Hinkle, aye.
The ayes have it.
We are in close.
Well, sorry to keep you, both of you at this point, waiting so long. Um, so I'll go back to the board then. So based on our conversations and closed session, is there any discussion or feeling that we need to change or make anything, modifications to the parking policy? Okay, with that, there is nothing, there is no motion, and we're adjourned. Thank you.